Salary board. And this is February 16th, 2023, 20:09:33 arrived. So we call salary board. You to order the roll call members present.
Commissioner Michael Berger.
Present.
Commissioner Pashin.
I'm here.
Commissioner Bealimbo.
Present.
Controller Whitcomb.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, now's the opportunity for any public comment to come before salary. See anything so we have the minutes in hand of the salary board meeting of February 2 of this year. Action.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
But that is second. And seconded. If there's no further questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to five, which is the approval of salary.
I'll make a motion to approve the salary board actions.
I will second that.
Okay, it's seconded. Questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
She carries. Brings us to I am six other business. Salary actions. Okay, if not, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Stand here. Move us into the formal meeting. Open with a pledge of allegiance. Thanks. All reading the order and begin with the roll call members present.
Commissioner Michael Berger. Commissioner Pashin, I'm here. Commissioner Bealimbo.
Present.
Right, now's the opportunity for a public comment to come before the board commissioners. And when wishing to make a comment on any agenda item, we will entertain that during the point at which that item is discussed. So. But something that's not on the agenda, now's your chance to talk about that. Well, here are these things, so that moves us to the consent agenda portion. And these are the routine. That's what routine items that appear. Not controversial such, put them together. Expeditiously. Stacy, what would you like?
I'm pretty much the beginning.
Okay, still getting used to it.
I know that, and that's why I didn't just say now, I thought it would be a little bit humorous. We are still getting used to this new meeting process, so. Good morning, everyone, so the consent agenda section. As Commissioner Michael Berger mentioned, are routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature. Anyone would like to have any of those topics discussed, please request that it be removed. Otherwise, if I hear no request, I will ask for action on that.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Presentance.
I second that motion.
It's moving seconded. So for the questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. The next section of the agenda is the regular agenda, so these are our items that are nonroutine or required discussion prior to approval. And then each of these items would be acted upon individually, and I'll start by calling on Darby Chrisley to discuss agenda item 14, which is a contract for adult probation. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a renewal contract for our information system. We contract with CDI BTM. We started contracting with them in May of 2020. There was a change to some of the cost, and as I calculated from last year, it's only an additional $200.
Any questions for Darby?
No. Just from motion.
I will move to approve the CDI BTM contract for adult probation.
Seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If she cares.
Thank you, commissioners. Next, we have a contract for aging and community services, and Kim Witten is joining us on Zoom to discuss. Morning, Kim.
Good morning, good morning, commissioners. The addendum for Masai Lifeways is to increase the daily rate for adult daycare from 4460 per day to 4950 per day.
Any questions for Kim?
There's no questions, want to take motion.
Move to approve the contract addendum for Masai Lifeways Community Support Services as presented.
I second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. If she cares.
Thank you.
Jamie Ryberg is joining us to discuss several contracts for children in youth. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, everyone. The first one I have is an addendum to George Jr. or an existing contract. We're adding a secure program to that. It is $751.50 a day. It's not going to be used often, but it is a program that we need to have. And the second one is Bucks County Youth Center. It's also a secure detention program at $400 a day.
Any questions for Jamie?
Want to take a motion.
I will move to approve the contracts for children in youth as presented.
Second. Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Lori Glace is joining us from the Conservation District to talk about two grant application requests. Good morning, Lori.
Good morning, good morning, commissioners. This morning, I would like to ask for permission to file two mini grants with PACD. Those are both educational grants. One is for Rain Barrel Workshop to be held with Lower Allen Township. And the other mini grant is to do an educational sign for a stream restoration project we did in Dickinson Township at Stewart Park. There's no money being asked for the county. It would all be through PACD as reimbursement. Any questions?
Motion to approve the grant application $2,000 for the Dickinson Township Stewart Park sign.
I second that motion.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 So commissioners, before Lori goes, I do want to share with you that this will be her last meeting. She has been hired and she starts next week as the district director in Juniata County. Conservation District Director, so we wish her, I wish her well, and I know that you do as well. But I didn't want her to leave without you having the opportunity to realize this is her last meeting with us.
Congratulations. We'll miss you, but sounds very exciting.
Thank you so much, and I wanted to say I really enjoyed working for you guys over the years as well. I've really enjoyed working here in Cumberland County.
Good luck to you, Lori.
Also, I'd like to make motion to approve the grant application of $2,000 for Lower Allen Rain Barrel Workshop.
I second that motion.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And I did mention earlier, we're still getting used to this new process. I apologize for interrupting those motions. I just didn't want Lori to leave before we had an opportunity to share that. I apologize. Thanks, Lori.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
We'll move on then to the next agenda item, and this is a grant awarding contract for the district attorney. We have Adrian Vaughn here to discuss.
Good morning. As you mentioned, we got applied for this grant in November. This was a national grant for community awareness projects that would fall in line with the National Victims Rights Week. We were awarded that grant. I think there were 51 projects that were awarded across the country. We had submitted a grant of about $5,000, and that's the value we're awarded. So today I'm seeking approval to accept their approval, I guess, basically.
Any questions for Adrian?
So motion.
I will move to approve OVC and NAVAA grant award and contract of $4,988.92 for the district attorney.
Moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion.
Our next agenda item is for drug and alcohol, and it's a contract addendum. And Ryan Simon is here to discuss. Morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Earlier in the fiscal year, we had one of our student assistance providers indicate to us that they were no longer able to provide the student assistance portion of their contract. So we went to our other providers and Roxbury Treatment Center. So that they would be able to provide these services. So this addendum changes the individual outpatient rate and adds early intervention to their contract.
Questions for Ryan?
We have a motion.
Yeah, move to approve the contract addendum for UHSPA and Roxbury Treatment Center.
I second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
The next agenda item is a contract for facilities management, and we have Brent here to discuss.
Good morning, commissioners. So this contract for you is with Guardian. It's for water treatment services and along with Legionella testing. This is a three-year contract, $39,774. The treatment provides corrosion protection of our cooling towers and of our closed water systems. Basically, any, any system that has water for heating and cooling, this is a treatment for that. We did combine two contracts into one, plus we added Legionella testing into this contract as well. It just, it helps our staff with more efficiency with, you know, one invoice versus multiple invoices. And plus, we were able to take advantage of a 2% discount on some areas that we were not previously able to take.
Questions?
I will move to approve the Guardian 19754 contract for facilities management as discussed.
Moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If she cares.
Brent is also going to be discussing a capital project request.
So this is a capital project request is to replace the VAB, which is variable air volume units in the East Wing building. These new units will have digital controls as compared to the pneumatic controls that's on there now. This project request is in the amount of $700,000. If we will use the ERP grant money to pay for this project. The reason this project is needed is there's several components within the BAVs that are obsolete that we can no longer get parts for. There's actuators and there's what we call reheat in these units that we are unable to get parts for. And they're probably the two most critical components in a VAB box. The benefits that we'll have once this project is completed. You know, we'll have better control, better temperature control of the areas. We'll have remote monitoring, so we'll be able to have a quicker response time whenever there's an issue. There will be a significant energy savings, however, I cannot tell you what that will be exactly. What I can tell you is digital controls as compared to pneumatic controls, they'll tell you the digital controls are 15% more efficient, at least coming out of the box, right? So saying that with the pneumatic controls that we currently have, they, most of these VAB boxes are original to the East Wing. So they're 30-plus years old. The, if you look, the typical lifespan of a VAB is 15 to 20 years. Even Ashray even has it posted on their, on a document that, you know, that the VAB lifespan is typically 20 years, they say. They also will state that the VAVs, the pneumatic controls of a VAB will start losing efficiency when it hits about 25% of its life span. So saying all that, you know, we've been running somewhat inefficient in that building for a long time. But, but because I don't, I can't, I can't tell you what level of inefficiency we're running, is why I can't give you a solid number. So.
Any questions for Brent?
Move to approve the capital project request for facilities management. For variable air volume and controls replacement, total project cost of $700,000.
I second.
Moving seconded, questions, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If she cares.
All right, our next agenda item is a contracted addendum for juvenile probation, and we have Andy Benner here to discuss.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a contract with Hugh Smith and Associates, which is a psychological provider for our department. It is listed as a decrease. This was initial contract, has been intact since 2018. It was a five-year contract. Since that time, we spent about $10,000 off that, so we were listed in the remaining balance as the amount moving forward. They have adjusted their rates, so there was an increase in some of the services. So really, in five years, we spent about $10,000, but understand that some of the services they provide with amenability and whether or not someone's competent to stay in trial can sometimes cost up to $2,500 to $5,000 if we would need that type of evaluation. It's a little hard to predict for those. Unfortunately, have not had those. I will also say that in these types of contracts, we usually use medical assistance first or anything that's covered by insurance. So a lot of times we'll get costs from our providers for smaller amounts, because some of those evaluations are covered by insurance, and then we just made a difference. Any other questions or any questions?
I will move to approve the Student and Associates Contract Addendum for Juvenile Probation.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, I couldn't make your award.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you.
All right, next we have contracts for NHID, and we have Annie Strike joining us on Zoom. Good morning, Annie.
Good morning, all. So I have four early intervention contracts to discuss with commissioners. The first being with Jennifer Snyder, and it's a contract increase. It's an amendment of $10,111. And, and it is due to an increase in authorized services for children between the ages of birth to three. Brings the total contract to $35,286. The second is with Joanna Carnes, and very similarly, because of additional services being authorized for children, this is an increase of $246, which brings that contract to $5,108. The third contract is with Early Intervention Specialists, and this is also an amendment. It's an increase of $34,645. And again, due to an increase in the needs of children in our counties. That brings that contract to a total of $117,633. And those are the three amendments. The fourth early intervention contract is actually a new provider. Grow and Tell Seedlings, new for early intervention, and it's for speech therapy services for children ages birth to three, and the contract is $16,346. Do you have any questions for me? Okay, then I'll proceed with the IDD contracts. Vista Autism Services, and this is a renewal for IDD. It's a decrease of $63,114, and the service is supported employment for individuals with autism. So the total contract is $40,000. And then the last contract is Wood Services, and it's an amendment. It's an increase of $86,412, and again, it's due to additional authorized services. The service is for respite for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and it brings the total contract to $188,742. Do you have any questions? All right, thank you.
Do we need separate motions for these key, we can do collectively. So we're looking for a motion.
And make a motion to approve the contracts for NHID for early intervention, three addendums and a new contract as presented. And intellectual development disabilities for the renewal and addendum as presented.
I second.
Okay, moving and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you.
We have a warden, Travis Shank here, to discuss the next agenda item, which is a grant application.
Morning, Commissioner, morning, Stacy. The Bureau of Justice Assistance, in conjunction with ICE and the Department of Homeland Security, U.S. SCAP, the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, provides federal payments to state localities that incur correctional officer salary costs for incarcerating undocumented criminal aliens with at least one felony or two misdemeanor convictions for violations of state or local law that are incarcerated for at least four consecutive days during the reporting period. I do want to note that you see that this is a decrease, and that's only because that number that you see, 14,000, is based on a four-year, so that's a roundabout, but that number could be higher because of how many we do hold. So it does fluctuate. Any questions?
No.
Okay, so we can promote.
I will move to approve the Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant Application of $14,000 for the president as discussed.
Second. Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Give that a second. We'll move on then to the next agenda item, which are the Recovery Grant Program contracts. You'll see there are several more of the grantees who have completed and signed and returned their contracts. And again, just as a reminder, what that means is they have worked with the subject matter expert who is assigned to develop performance measures and to return any additional documents along with their signed contract. Commissioners, do you have any?
Make a motion to approve the contracts, the Recovery Grant Program for Foster Memorial Library, Cumberland Library, South Middleton Municipal Authority, Upper Allen Township, South Middleton Township, United Way of Carlisle and Cumberland County, PA Elks Major Projects, Penn State University College of Medicine, and John Gray Library.
I second.
Moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If she cares.
The next agenda item is a contract for public safety, and Michelle Parsons is joining us on Zoom to discuss. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, thanks for having me today. What we are presenting you is the Distribution Management Plan. This is part of our EMPG, Emergency Management Performance Grant Requirement. This was initially implemented in 2019, and it is required to be reviewed and or updated within every two years. With relation to all the after-action reviews that we have completed over the last couple of years, it was determined that we needed to do a rewrite of this distribution management plan from its initial to reflect, so it parallels with our emergency operations plan. It does not replace it. It is just an addendum to it or an appendix, and it explains if there is a need for distribution management as it comes through our agency. This is the process that it will follow. So it specifically outlines activations levels for the plan, which parallel with our emergency operations plan. It requires resource ordering procedures are identified, how we can distribute the methods and the preferences, inventory management, as well as the demobilization process, and the direction, control, and coordination. So again, as this was a rewrite of the plan, we thought it was best to bring to you for approval and formal promulgation before we submit it back to our state partners for final approval with our grant requirements. Thank you.
Any questions for Michelle?
Okay, because we need actual.
I will move to approve the Distribution Management Plan Contract for Public Safety as discussed.
Second. Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next agenda item is a contract for recycling and waste. We've got Justin Miller on Zoom to discuss. Good morning.
Good morning. So this is the last step in finalizing our 2023 plans for our Household Hazardous Waste Disposal Program. As you know, historically, we've piggybacked on the Department of Ag's chem-sweep contract to use their hazardous waste contractor. And in doing that, they annually offer a certain amount to cover pesticide disposal costs. So by the end of January, they ask for those counties that have a desire to participate in a program. Then they make their final offer, which they have done recently, which is $7,000 for pesticide disposal costs. So what I have here for your signature is a letter that just confirms Cumberland County's intent to utilize their contractor and to accept that $7,000 for pesticide disposal costs. I'm estimating the contractor's cost, total cost for the year would be about $128,000 or $32,000 per event, and that would include the $7,000 that PDA pays directly.
Any questions for Justin?
Okay, we're gonna need a motion on that. It was to approve the MXI Environmental Services PA Department of Agricultural Contract and Recycling and Waste.
I second.
It's moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Doug, before you go, are we, have you decided if we're having an authority meeting next week, or is that still pending?
That's still pending, Gary, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for a proposal from engineer.
Okay.
I hope that I'll send out an email today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Sheriff's Office, and we have Lieutenant Taylor here to discuss.
Morning, commissioners. The contract, excuse me, the contract before you this morning is for benchmark analytics. It's going to be record management system. Currently, we only have County Sweep, which only manages our civil process, PFAs and warrants. What we'd like to do is improve our record management systems, and this allows us to combine Deputy Profile Module, Training Module, Daily Log Module, Use of Force, Internal Affairs Modules, which will improve our transparency as an office. Community Engagement, which is one of our newly formed divisions, and Performance Evaluations, which will allow us to better track our deputies fresh out of the academy with their field training processes. It's all tier-based permissions, which means the sheriff and the chief pick who has access to which modules. And the contract is for $29,350 over five years. That includes all of the increases in the contract, and the first year of the contract is already budgeted.
Any questions?
So, if you have a motion.
I will move to approve the Benchmark Analytics Contract for the Sheriff's Office as presented.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I don't think you were getting any no votes, considering you started reading that and you put your hand on your side. Bad habit, I get it. Thank you all.
All right, our next agenda item is a credit application with Guernsey Finance, and on behalf of the courts, we have Ron Snow joining us on Zoom to discuss. Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, commissioners. We're requesting approval on a credit application with Guernsey to open up a second account. We do currently have an account with Guernsey, however, AOPC purchased printers for the 10 MDGA offices, courts, and DRO. And with that purchase is special HP pricing through Co-Stars on the toners. So it's a savings of $86 per toner, and that's not extended to the rest of the county, only for the printers purchased by AOPC. So Guernsey's solution was for us to open up a second account to charge the special toner pricing to. So we're estimating a savings of about $11,500 over the course of the year by opening up the second account.
Any questions for Ron?
Listen to a motion.
Yeah, move to approve the credit application with Guernsey as presented.
I second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Warden, I do apologize, I should have called on this agenda item earlier. We have our warden who was waiting here patiently to discuss a capital project.
Ron, hang on. Good morning again, commissioners and Stacy. The prison, the prison's elevator has been in place since 1985 and is in need of replacement and modernization. Over the years, as breakdowns have occurred in the motherboard and other electrical malfunctions, it has become increasingly harder to find parts in some cases, the parts that by replacing the elevator, we will have a more durable and reliable machine, thus reducing our operational costs and troubleshooting time, along with reducing the energy consumption while improving fire and life safety features. The elevator's main purpose in the jail is to transport the inmates' laundry and cleaning handle for the inmates to keep themselves and units clean. So this project is $165,000 and will be paid for out of the canteen.
Please will entertain a motion for approval.
I will move to approve the capital project request for the prison for elevator modernization with a total project cost of $165,000.
Second. Okay, moving seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, moving seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the next agenda item is also a capital project request, and this is for the treasurer for hotel tax collection software. Kelly Nederer is here with us.
Yes, hello. I am requesting approval to sign, execute a service agreement on hotel tax collection software. And the initial one-time setup fee of $7,672 was approved to be funded by the Records Improvement Committee. The amount will equate then to a $500 a month service fee as long as we remain a customer of this vendor. And that fee will be directly covered by the costs of the collection process of the hotel tax. There will be no cost to the county in doing this. So it will greatly improve our collection, tracking, storing, management of the data, along with the priority of making it far, far easier for folks to file online and to also make a payment to us online. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, want to move.
Move to approve the capital project request for the treasurer's office for hotel tax collection software with total project cost of $37,672.
My second.
Moving seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The next agenda item is our last capital project request, and this is for children and youth. And we have Lisa Ryder here with us to discuss.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. We currently have two copiers in our office where the four-year lease has expired. I'm here to ask to enter into a new lease for four years for two new copiers. The cost to the county would be $5,887.87, and that's an increase of basically $100 over the last four-year lease to the county. So the total cost of the two leases is $29,439. We currently have about 90 employees that utilize these two copiers, and they're used very heavily for requirements for court and other things, et cetera. Are there any questions?
I'll just add that as part of the review process, IMTO walks through a needs analysis with the departments to determine whether a new copier or a purchase of the existing copier, and whether it should be a purchase or a lease.
By doing a lease, we are able to like get the most current equipment that's out there. If we haven't purchased it, then we're stuck with it until it dies. So this gives us the opportunity to have to date equipment that's more efficient.
I will move to approve the capital project request for children and youth for a lease for two copiers with a total project cost of $29,439.36.
Second. Okay, moving seconded. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The next agenda items are the Commissioners' liaison reports, and I'll start by calling on Commissioner Eikoberger.
Okay, just briefly, we already discussed recycling, so the only other thing I have is mental health IDD advisory board is later today at noon, so I'm tuning into that on Zoom, and I just got the sneak preview of the, all the information, because mostly the minutes which I've already reported on. No special topic today for presentation, but obviously a lot going on. So the one thing I did get an update from Annie Straight this morning was that there had been multiple meetings with Dolphin County to draft the letter of agreement. This is regarding the Regional Crisis Walk-in Center that's been discussed before. So that document is, I don't know what percentage is done, but it's working toward done, and that'll be brought to the Board Commissioners for approval, once that's complete terms of recommendation. So MH, staff, and communications continue to work on messaging regarding budget shortfall and growing unmet need in the community, and we've got some work to do on that, so. Be talking about that more in the future. That's all I have.
So I will remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. The first thing I wanted to talk about is Monday, February 13th. I heard three of the nicest things about Kirk Stoner, just really, really great. With the library board, two of the library directors were talking about how helpful he has been, his team has been in terms of getting the grant materials together for their ARPA funds. And Annie Hoff and her team, boy, really nice compliments to Annie Hoff and her team in the Office of Aging. So I'm so grateful for those, as well as for everyone who works for Cumberland County. I was at the Western Cog on Monday, and I think the Western Cog may be coming to meet with us or at least write us a letter about the P25 radios. We talked about how Vince and I had gone ahead and approved $3.75 million for radios, and there was a discussion about how that really and truly sometimes is not enough for our western municipalities and their public safety officials. At that meeting, Representative Blythe mentioned to me, and then I had a conversation yesterday with Janet Anderson at Katic about this Carlisle Events rents property from the National Guard. The National Guard has said that they will not be continuing that lease, and so they are planning on closing, we believe it's Gate Six and Seven at the Carlisle Events. And so one of the things Representative Blythe said to me was, you know, before that gate was open, traffic would back up to the turnpike because they couldn't get through those. People could, just didn't have that right of ingress and egress. So I know that's something Representative Blythe's office is working on. I know that's something that Janet is working on with Carlisle Events, but I wanted to make sure that we all knew that, were aware that that was an issue. The County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, the Emergency and Veterans Committee met. I am a member of that committee. We talked at length about the funding of first responders, how will first responders be funded in the Commonwealth? I know there were going to be some lobbying efforts, and I saw bright and early, I believe it was this morning, that members of the House are now saying that we need, they need to get into session because they have been, they have received materials regarding how in desperate need our first responders are of funding. So I thought that was maybe a positive development. Norfolk Southern, I'm sure everyone is aware of what happened with Norfolk Southern. That was last week on the Ohio-Pennsylvania border, where there was a derailment that created an unbelievable public safety emergency. And I see that our governor has put out a call for a look at federal regulations on railroads. I see that our two senators, Casey and Fetterman, have put out the same call. So I am so sorry that that had to happen to even get this moved into action, but there is a definite need for a look at federal railroad regulations. And the last time I was here, I know that I talked about how Cumberland County Public Safety and Hazmat are really working on developing a positive relationship with Norfolk Southern, and certainly that was a timely conversation a month ago and even more timely now. And finally, this morning, Planning Met. And so the Middlesex Township Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Redevelopment Opportunity Overlay, was recommended for approval. The Middlesex Township Zoning Ordinance Map and Text Amendment, Redevelopment Opportunity Overlay, was recommended for approval. Both of those are subject to staff comments. The Southampton Township New Zoning Ordinance was tabled for March. The township is going to be bringing a revised ordinance to planning today for review. So they just needed some time to go in, to get into that in review. Kirk brought a proposed subdivision and land development review fee schedule, and that will be coming to the Commissioners with a resolution, so there can be a change in fees. One of the things that he talked about was the analysis of staff time used to review all kinds of ordinances in the subdivision and land development review. The fee schedule is almost a break even. It certainly does not go overboard in fees, and he gave a nice breakdown of what other counties are charging. And certainly, planning's fees are very reasonable. Mike Snyder, our own Mike Snyder. There was Joe Zune. He resigned from the board, so Mike Snyder will be filling in with him for him for this year, and then they'll be looking to replace Mike at the end of the year. He is the public safety liaison to the planning board, so we get the best of both worlds there. Let's look at the plans. The Perry County New Comprehensive Plan was recommended for approval. The MPC requires that the county comprehensive plans are sent to adjacent counties for review and comment. So it was nice that our group got to weigh in on that. Perry County is moving things ahead in such a nice way. And see, there's a note here that all infrastructure grants are under contract, and CCPD staff is leading grant administration. There was something else. In January of 2023, there were 14 county subdivision and land development activity, 14 plans, and year-to-date last year, there were 11. So 2023 is off to excellence. That is all I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner DePaul.
None of my groups met last Tuesday, so our Housing Redevelopment Authority meets today at noon, and the Department of Aging Advisory Board meets, excuse me, Housing Redevelopment meets today. The Department of Aging Advisory Board meets tomorrow, both of course, which I will be attending. Jean, I have a question to Southampton zoning. Matt, what's the issue there?
So they're doing that zoning, their new zoning ordinance. Larry Hinkle was in attendance from the township, and there was a review of that zoning ordinance. There were many staff comments to that ordinance. And so, you know, the township went back and they made some changes, and now it's going back to review today to this, to county staff. And, you know, Steve talked about how we really wanted to take another good look at that zoning ordinance in a very holistic way. So that will go, they'll review it again, and it will show up at March's planning meeting. And I have it if you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And I would just remind everyone that every planning commission meeting, those materials are public. They're public before the meeting. They're on the planning commission website. The packets are often enormous. So I bet you can go and review all of the materials. Sorry, sorry, I jumped in there. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, good.
Thank you. I would like to report that executive sessions were held on February 9th, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. regarding personnel, and on February 13th, 2023, at 10:30 a.m. regarding real estate. Is there any other business to come before the board today? I know that the solicitor and I did discuss the capital planning policy to review and provided that to each of you. And that was provided to me when I rolled in from, I mean, I have not even looked at it, so I certainly would not be prepared to discuss it.
So if there's nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.